My name is Lou Enslon, the Vice Chair, taking over for Steve tonight. And I just want to call it a medium to order, and if we can please, I believe there's a flag over back this way, so we can stand up and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God in judicial deliberation and justice for all. Thank you. So we are going to begin tonight with the public hearing of the school construction referendum question. I think there were copies over on the side, if you haven't seen, they are there, which has all the details, and we're going to start with that if anyone has any questions regarding this specific...well, this specific part. We're going to also, when we get to our architect Ron, and we're going to, he's going to explain some more details about the building itself later on, but if there's any questions right now, it's an opportunity. All right. Seeing none at the moment, and there'll be an opportunity when our architect speaks, and Patrick's going to explain what he's going to explain. Let's move on to 4.0 on the agenda here. I just want to welcome our new student board member, Sidney Hollis, who is a junior at Morris. And welcome Sidney, glad to have you on board here, so I look forward to your participation. Please look at the minutes from September 25th, and if you haven't had a chance, take a look at them, and if you have any questions. There are...okay, we have lotion available, second for now. Any other discussion? All approved? Okay, ready for us, thank you. Adjustments to the agenda, does anyone have anything else that we need to change order or add? Anybody? No? All right. And the first one is, we have a public session, if anyone wants to come to speak to, this was on the agenda, right? First one is, if anyone wants to speak to anything on the agenda, now's the opportunity to come right up here. Okay, shout grab, that's fine. Let's move into committee reports, and like Ron, if you want to talk about the building update.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure. So as you all know, the upcoming vote on November 7th for the new high school project. I don't know if you have this handout available to you. Just running through it quickly, we're all aware that we have Wing Farm as our site. The development of Wing Farm has been taking place with the Department of Education throughout this entire process. Does anybody have any specific questions about the site development at Wing Farm and what we're doing? The next few pages in this handout have to do with the size of the building. Throughout the state process, we came up with a building size of 186,825 square feet. That includes Bath Regional Career and Technical Center, and Morris High School, as well as all the special ed programs, administration, the theater, and the athletic center. The theater is also supported right adjacent to the music programs, band and chorus and All three floors, we've created some color scheme here, so that you can see that the blue is Morris High School, the green is BRCTC, the teal in the upper right-hand corner, and a couple of spaces up the second floor have to do with athletics. So that's the gym, the locker rooms, the PE gym, as well as the fitness center and health suite. And then the yellow that you see on that first floor plan, and a little bit up on the second floor, is the theater and the balcony. And the layout of that theater, the balcony, is modeled after the Montgomery Theater. So it's kind of one way for us to reach back into the history of the existing school. You'll also notice there's one main entrance that comes in along a gray bar, and that gray bar is a shared space administration for both BRCTC and Morris High School, and this allows all the faculty and the administrators to learn the names of all the students as they come in and out of the school, and provide a very safe and secure entrance way. Again, any questions on the plans? Yep.
You mentioned the secure space. Is that the area that would also include any security data or instruments that would monitor the school?
Yep, so we're going to have security cameras, CCTV, closed-circuit cameras. They start right there in the front door, and we also reach out and pull them onto cameras, so we can see the entire parking lot. It's secure because as people come in the front door of the building, there's a vestibule there, they cannot get through that second row of vestibule doors, they have to go through the office. So that's going to be an opportunity for the administrators to meet whoever's coming in, find out why they're coming in, and then decide to either let them go into the school, or have a student or a faculty member, staff member, come down and be put down there.
So all the other means of egress are locked down, or non-accessible?
Correct. They're either just exit only, which means there's no hard way to even open the door, or the only way to get in is with card access. So the faculty and staff and administrators will have a card, the students will not. And so basically, everybody needs to come through the front door.
Thank you.
Yep, great questions. So then, as we move on, the cost of the project includes some locally funded items. And so just as a quick run-through of the publicly funded items, we're expanding the dining area, so that we can have two lunches as opposed to three, and that's connected to the library, so we can also have a larger library space. The two lunches will allow lunch to take place for an hour a day, and the rest of the time, that space is used by the library. We're paying for an additional IT support space that the state would not support, and it's because it's larger, because it takes care of all the IT for the RSU, the entire RSU. And so what we're doing is paying for the additional space that gets you back to the same-size space that you have now in this school. There's a room right off the main lobby that'll be shared by the alumni and Bath Regional Career and Technical Center. That's their 301, so if you came in tonight, you may notice that the lights are on down at 301, they're having a yoga class, or some kind of class, people in there exercising. And so, and so the idea is that that type of community space, that alumni space, will be being used when BRCTC is not using it during the school day. And with that, we are looking at having managed displays, which are lockable for the alumni, and only the alumni can access them. And we're also, at some point, going to provide more storage in the room, in the building, for the alumni. There's a concession stand, so right outside the theater, and right outside the new competition gym, is a concession stand that we're looking to pay for locally. These spaces are all spaces that the state's formula, the state's process and how they go through this are things that they normally do not fund. They see these as really, either educational enhancements beyond what they would pay for, or community enhancements. The theater, they basically pay for an assembly space for one-third of the population of the school, and we're paying, we're going out to the voters, asking them to pay to expand theater to 500 seats and to provide actual theater amenities. And the theater is also designed to expand to 700 seats. The gymnasium, they normally just pay, the state normally just pays for competition gym. In our case, we've asked for them to provide a PE gym that's large enough for a full-size basketball court. So while there's a competition game going on, there's ample space for other practices to take place, for either wrestling or basketball, and accommodates a full-size court. Where they agreed to pay for a portion of that, and the RSU will be paying for the other On the upper levels, there's, again, there's space for the lobby, and then there's space for an IEP coordinator, as well as some space associated with the STEM program. The last thing that we're looking forward to pay is for a geothermal system, which will be designed as an alternate within the project itself, as well as other educational enhancements. And the goal here is that we don't bond anything more than 7.2 million. So what we have here for a cost, which I'll get into in a second, is basically a not-to-exceed cost. So all of our contingencies, whether they're design contingencies, bidding contingencies, construction contingencies, are all built in. And so what the RSU has decided is that we're going to bond up to 7.2 million, it could be less. As the bids come in, it could be less, as we continue to develop the design of the school. So any questions on the spaces and the extra amenities? So how the cost breaks down, sorry, is that the state is essentially paying 67,486,890. That's their portion of the project. And again, we're setting a not-to-exceed budget for bonding at 7.2 million on the local side. It breaks down to under 10%. Most communities in Maine, when they go out to do this, they spend approximately 10% or more as a local contribution, knowing what the state supports and what the state doesn't support. And your contribution will be 8.6% of the project, and the state's contribution is Again, we've had some questions that talk about how is that all broken down in terms of state tax dollars versus local? The bond question will have one question, essentially, and the question would be, do you approve this? But it'll be for the full amount of 74,686,890, because that full amount is actually what the bond is going to be. And then every month, after the payments start, the state pays their share. So you're only paying on 7.2 million or less of that bond, but the voting question will be for the full amount. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. Any questions about that?
You mentioned that under the 7.2 million, 700,000 is called fundraising? Is there a plan for the fundraising?
There is. So actually, the 7.2 million is bonded, but the RSU is trying to offset some of that cost by reaching out to fundraisers. They have targeted 700,000, and so they've also hired a professional, and Patrick can speak a little bit more about that, to help them go out and get these donations. And the more that obviously is donated, the less that these can be supported by the bond. The other interesting thing about the bond is it doesn't, we actually don't go out and sell the bonds until midway through construction, or in this case, the spring of 2019. So the RSU will have bids in hand, and see all the bid date numbers, and have reconciled all of the contingencies by that point, so that they can decide, do we now take out a bond for 7.2 or 7.1, but it won't exceed 7.2? If that makes sense. So how this breaks down for each community is that the 7.2 million, if you're from Marouse, and you own a $100,000 property, your annual payment, which is the worst case, because over time, these payments are going to go down as the bond matures, and your worst case will be 17.59, and that's an estimate. And that's been estimated on both the property values, state assessment, basically of the town, as well as number of students using the formula that breaks down their participation in the RSU. On the Bath side, Bath residents, if you own a $100,000 property, your annual payment amount, worst-case scenario, is 31.69. Again, that will go down over time as the bond matures. In Pittsburgh, same thing, 100,000 square foot property, the annual payment's at 13.87. And in Woolwich, for a $100,000 property, it's 30.96. Any questions or comments about that? Okay. The schedule is such that we're going to break it into two pieces. So the bond vote is taking place on November 7th. Please, again, have all your friends come out and vote. We're looking to then start construction on the site, because there's a lot of site work that needs to get done at Wing Farm. We're looking for that to start in the summer of 2018, and then work on that, so that basically they get a lot of that site completed between June and, let's say, January of 2019. And then the building would start construction after all of that site work has taken place in the spring of 2019, and be completed in September of 2020. And what that allows the RSU to do is get bond anticipation notes to cover that first piece of the project, and then roll that into a project bond in the spring of 2019. So that, if you think about that, right, all of your site work, or most of it, will be completed. Your foundations will be complete, and your steel will be complete when you go out to bond the project. So that allows the state, as well as the RSU, to get a better hold on the contingencies, how much of the contingency was spent, because obviously, if those contingencies are not spent, then the state and the RSU are going to bond less money. And that's the way that they've always, that's the way the state does this, to control costs and to make sure that our over-bonding is ready. That's about it. So if you don't have any other questions, I'll sit down.
All right. Thank you, Ron. Okay, thank you, Ron. Yes, remember November 7th. All right, Katie's not here, so 8.2, Patrick's going to talk about where we are before we kill the session.
Yeah, just a couple of quick updates to give the board and the public an idea of the Professional Development Day that we had on October 6th. We had technology training for KDAE staff in the morning, and the high school was working all day on proficiency-based education. In the morning, I attended three sessions, very worthwhile, some of our teachers and our technology department put these trainings on, and very well done. And the board put quite a emphasis and put a lot of money towards our technology hardware, and so it only makes sense for us to get into professional development. In the afternoon, it was expeditionary learning at the middle school level, and it was benchmark assessment, basically reading assessments in the afternoon for the elementary. Just an update to the board, the administrative team has spent a lot of time modifying our teacher evaluation process. Not so much the process, but I guess we'd say the rubric, and one of your goals this year was to get a better understanding of the teacher observation evaluation. So I think that Katie and I, and a couple principals, will probably come maybe around the holiday time and give you an update then, and let you know how it's working. But also a thank you to the staff that are on our professional committee for teacher evaluation. They also put a lot of time and effort into that.
Thank you. And I just want to move right into the committee's report.
So a question that the gentleman in the bag asked about fundraising. We do have a professional that the board has hired for three years, until the doors opened in 2020, and she happens to be here tonight, Leslie Manning over here in a greenish sweater. And so she's here tonight, she has provided the board with a synopsis, a summary of what she's done over the last month since the last time you received her report. So I just wanted to see if you had any questions, instead of me giving a summary of that. You've all had a chance to read it, and maybe what questions you have with Leslie tonight.
Anybody? Don't have a chance to read the rest?
All right, so if you don't have questions, Leslie, do you mind coming up and just maybe touching on a few of those items? You know, the committee formation, goals, you know, things that you've done to date?
Sure. I appreciate the opportunity, thank you. One of the things that's important about developing any campaign is gauging the amount of community support that is going to be available to us. You know, the easy way to do this is to provide 700 people to write a check for $1,000, but it never really does work that way. So we've identified some of the key elements for what this campaign will engage with, and obviously, one of the key elements is the Alumni Association. I'll be meeting with their executive committee later this week to look to what has been called the most active alumni, high school alumni association in the country. An association that has already provided a tremendous amount of support to the educational goals of this school over the years. When we look at that group, which is a highly motivated group, we think there's a lot of potential there to help us realize our goals. I think the other thing that we're spending a lot of time with right now are the potentially larger donors, like foundations, employers, corporations, local businesses. We're assembling a campaign team, we're putting together some, we're having some discussion and conversation with potential honorary co-chairs, and people who are identifying the community as being part of this, this school, and our leaders in their fields, and can confer a certain degree of status and credibility, if you will, to the campaign. In addition to the honorary co-chairs, we will have an active campaign team, and everybody we've approached to date has said yes, that they want to be part of this team. And this team will not only involve community people and alumni, it will also involve the staff and the board, and Vice Chair Enslon has agreed to be a member of the campaign team, and we welcome his expertise and his enthusiasm for this project. The other thing to remember is that the school district in and of itself is not a standalone nonprofit, but the school district is going to be using the Education Foundation, the RSU One Education Foundation, as the vehicle through which these donations can be made. And as a result, we are going to beef up the transparency and the oversight of that foundation. It's been very ably led by a volunteer from the community, but we want to make sure that this amount of money flowing through the foundation, that there's appropriate oversight and transparency, so that people know where the money is going and what it's designated for. So we're in the process, in addition to building up the campaign team, of also developing a strong core of volunteers who'll have oversight of the foundation. And I think that puts us in a very good position moving forward, because in the course of doing the research for the capital campaign, surprise, surprise, we're going to create and find other opportunities to do grants and other kinds of donations to the school once it's in fact open, and perhaps benefit the entire district. Finally, I think that something that you've heard from Ron publicly really bodes well for us, and that is the level of engagement by the community in this process. As I understand it, over 50 people have participated to date in committees and work groups and subcommittees. We had over 100 people at the initial hearing, and as you recall, last month, there were over 160 people at the public hearing that approved the preliminary budget and the preliminary design. I think that is an indication of the level of support, and I don't need to tell you, because you're probably getting the questions as well. When are we going to hit the ground with this? When are we going to move on this? And the answer is, as soon as the voters get their approval. We're not going to anticipate that the answer will be a slam dunk. We certainly hope it will be, but we will build on the momentum of strong approval from the community to then launch this campaign. It will be a pledge-based campaign, and people will have the opportunity to give all the three years that of 2018, 2019, and 2020. And as you've heard, and something that I think is very exciting, is the incoming class of freshmen this year will be the first class to graduate from the new school. So we can, we can do this. This is, this is a system that can be very self-contained and very effective, but it's going to require attention to detail, transparency, accountability, and the ongoing support of a very engaged community. Do you have any questions for?
Question?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Sounds very exciting. All right. I need to listen to your comments.
Just, just a couple of things that are worth mentioning is, you saw in your reports about the mentoring program that we do in our district, we do multiple ones, but the ones I've mentioned tonight is just the Morris High School football team, starting to work with students at one of our elementary schools, as well as the Academy Student, which is our alternative ed program at the high school, again, going out and working and serving as good role models for younger students. Jobs for Maids graduates, I don't know if you saw in the paper, but they were being, they were selected as the 2017 Bath Citizen Involvement Day Youth Award recipient, and Maria Morris continues to do a great job with those students, and really being recognized for all of the community service that they've done around the area of Bath. 25 students at Morris earned AP Advanced Placement Scholar Awards, and for those of you that are not familiar, it's one of the more rigorous exams that you can take after taking an AP class, advanced placement class. We had five students qualified for the AP Scholar with Distinction Award by earning an average of at least 3.5 on all exams taken, one through five is what you can get, five being the highest. We had seven students qualified for AP Scholar with Honor by earning an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams. And then we had 13 students qualified for AP Scholar Award by completing three or more exams with a score of three or higher. So congratulations to those students. And just lastly, I'll pass these around, but these are from seventh-grade students at BMS. Just thank you, letters to board for your support for the seventh-grade Ferry Beach Ecology School. Thanks.
Thank you, Patrick. Great, great news. 9.2, our financial report, Deb.
So tonight, we're looking at the financial report for the month of September, even though your financial report and your board practice is the month of August. Trust me, the numbers have been updated, but I missed that headache, and I just realized it tonight. So third month of the year, we have spent 3.9 million dollars out of our 28 million dollar budget. That is 13.72%, which compares to 13.8 last year. So, I mean, we're very close, so it's a real measure of how we spend money, more than anything else. And revenue, we brought in 7.1 million dollars, and once again, that's real close to the percentage that we did last year. So September's a big month that we start spending, and we'll go along from that point. That's when all our teacher salaries really start, September, and that's why we see the big jump from that month.
A little bit, I should have made sure this flash.
Everything's moved to this glass at this point. I'll keep you posted.
Great. All right, thank you, Deb. Appreciate it. Okay, 10.1, here we have a view of 2017, 2018 board goals. These are the goals that we established, just, we announced them for the first time last month, right after we had, and trying to remember, do we need to read through them? Jennifer, usually you, if you want to comment?
So I think with goals, they're most effective, we do review them every meeting and ask ourselves, you know, where are, where are we hitting them and what are our plans for the future? And, you know, the construction project is going to be in the forefront of a lot of our work, and has been, and I think that we are hitting a number of those goals in terms of getting the advocacy done, looking toward our November referendum. We have a flyer that's coming out, I can see that we have given today, and that kind of speaks to trying to educate the public, which is one of our... of speaks to trying to educate the public, which is one of our goals, and also to try to clarify exactly what the cost and funding will be going forward for this project. So we're hitting that goal. Patrick talked a little bit about a goal that we have for understanding teacher evaluation system better, and we'll be getting some additional education on that. The other goal, which will be on our radar for this year, is to really better understand the RTI program, the Response to Intervention program, which, you know, is just trying to make sure that we're educated and understanding the kind of work that's already being done in the school system and how we can help support that. So I think we're on target in addressing these goals, but we need to keep track of them and not, and not lose sight of how, how we can, what's our best result for that end of year.
Great. Thank you, Jen. Any other comments about the goals?
Just that Goal One, Section One is at the head of the class right now.
That's right. That's right. Too worrying.
Advocacy leading up to the November referendum, so everybody work with us to let the public know what we're doing and what it's going to cost. I think it's a little confusing, because they'll be voting on the total amount bond, you know, and people will say, oh my gosh, but they're, they're really voting to bond state money for the vast majority of that figure, and we need to be able to communicate that to folks, that they're, they're not, they're not wanting $98 million or something, it's just the portion, the local portion. Because it is confusing for folks. I've got a couple of telephone calls on it.
Okay. Great. All right. Moving on, new business, 11.1. So we have some action items, a few action items coming up, so Cindy, you have a chance to vote, vote in the way you can. We want to, number one here is authorize the interlocal cooperative agreement for Sheepsburg Regional Educational Program. That is an action item. Do you want to speak to that before we vote?
Just briefly, last spring, you gave concept approval to this, to this plan. This is about a half a million grant from the Department of Education to start up a regional special education support program with four other districts. And so what we've done is, over the summer and this fall, we've had our attorneys review this and develop this agreement, and all the other districts have approved this already because they had board, board meetings before we did. But this is a program that we plan to start in one of our properties in this district in November, and nothing's really changed in this agreement, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So, yes, Jen.
Item 3A asks if it becomes effective, all this fund approval, the government bodies at least four of the five parties. Have, we have agreement on all parties on this?
All four. I believe all four of the other ones have agreed. Jupin and Woods have just felt like, you know, what's, they felt like there should be some wiggle room in there, and you can see later in the document, as far as the seat money is different if all five, you know, come in versus all four. I'd be very surprised if all five weren't totally committed to this. We've had numerous meetings about this. It was a supporting that our attorneys have viewed before with other cooperative agreements.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So like the motion to approve?
I'm over the school board authorize the SAU to enter into interlocal cooperative agreement to establish the Sheepsburg Regional Education Program substantially informed presented at this meeting, and to direct the superintendent to execute the agreement on behalf of the school board.
One second, that motion.
Okay, so you have my bill. Great. Any further discussion? Okay, all those approved. Any others? All right. And that passes. Thank you. Next, 11.2 here, authorize the daily of the Morris High School BRCTC brochure to all the communities.
So a special thank you to Ron and his firm for helping to put this together. There's still maybe a few tweaks to this, but we're out of the gun to, to get this out. This is something that we're going to pay to have a company do this for us. I think it's going to be about $1,800, and that is a cost that is reimbursable back to the district and the state as part of this project. So again, our goal is really going to mail this out to everyone and just try to provide the information that was reviewed tonight, so people can make an educated vote when they come out on November 7th. And we also are trying to make it clear, like Bill was talking about, you can see in the front page where it says 91.4% state-funded. So we have noticed one error tonight, but we'll look at it again later tonight and tomorrow, and we need to take it to the printer, and we just wanted to have you be in support of that, and vote tonight for the district to mail this out.
Okay, great. Now the motion.
Move for you, move for, here with the proposal.
Okay, motion from Bill. Second.
Oh, second.
From now. Any discussion?
Just a question for the layout, being of a certain age, as I take my glasses off, I put them on, take them off, put them on. Is it tri-fold? Is it, is the rent going to get any bigger at all, possible to, I mean, I know we want to put as much information on here as possible, it's just...
Yeah, it's, Rob is talking, I think it's going to be 11 by 17, so it's going to be a little bit bigger. So my assumption would be the print would, would enlarge.
That would be one of the, and it's a tri-fold?
It is.
Yeah. Great. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Okay. And it passes. Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, 11.3 is how to stay field trip, BRCTC to visit Boston.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Motion by Bill. One second.
Second.
Megan. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Annas. Thank you. Passes. And then we have two board policies. We will not be voting on those tonight, but that is a first reading. So 11.4A, JJIV2, interscholastic athletic eligibility, Bath Middle School. Do you all have a chance to speak to?
Yeah, it really should be, again, it's a first reading, but it should be all middle school. You know, Mr. Libby and Mr. Ward have both talked and both comfortable with this, and so Jen or Megan, I don't know if you guys want to talk about it, but it's really with proficiency-based learning and what habits of work, it still is a reflection of a student's effort and progress, it's just looking at it a little bit differently. But you guys want to add anything to that?
So I have a question for that, just because I've heard, because it's going around, heard from students. So how does it work? Is it, because if you have a standing grade, this seems to be more, if something specific happens in a given week, then the habit of work can affect, is that right, or is it...
It's still the same checking period of time.
It is the same period of time?
Same. That might take the same period of time, or, you know, three and fours, it would be more supportive.
Right.
They get down to one and two, it's the one and two, two's, that's when they pull that over back.
But it's the same time period?
Yes.
That's what, okay. Great. Any other questions on this particular policy?
Just, how does it match up with Morris eligibility? Is it considerably different, the week-by-week eligibility and that sort of thing?
It's, it's not that much different from a timeframe standpoint, but maybe habits of work is, you know, looking at it a little bit differently than, you know, the grades typically.
I'm used to high school eligibility.
Right.
Middle school eligibility was a little more severe.
Yeah.
In terms of maintaining some of that.
Yeah.
Satisfactory behavior.
Right.
Which is good. Thank you.
Okay. So that's that one. The next one is 11.4B, have, have naming of facilities. And any explanation or commentary? This is a change.
I mean, after hearing Leslie tonight talk, the policy, for those of you in the public, the policy says that facilities may not be named for businesses or organizations, and that's been our policy since, I guess, 2011. And we just felt that with this time, we're trying to raise money for a new building, and we shouldn't limit ourselves. I mean, there's still a process that's outlined here for the, for the board, talking about a subcommittee as well. You want to be careful when you name something after someone or a business or an organization, but in this time of building a new high school, we thought it was important to strike that, and again, leave it in the board's hands, oh, naming, right.
Yeah, yeah.
But this is not to be confused with that the entire school will still be referred to and indicated as Morris High School, right? There's not...
No, that's not a...
No, we're talking about, no, that's a good point. I mean, we're talking about a library, we're talking about a gym, we're talking about, you know, something in the, you know, anywhere in the building, that might be a room that somebody is donating money. So Leslie's in the process right now of working out, you know, the donations that people might want to make, and when the board or when that, when the fundraising committee might consider, you know, naming something after an organization or a person.
Any further questions? Okay. We'll do this for those next month. Action item. And we are at 12.0 Public Session, an opportunity for anyone in the public, if there's any comment you would like to make. Anyone? Now, seeing none, we will, and I guess we just have to have it on here for the next, our next board meeting. We didn't print it on here.
I'll have to check.
I forget, because it's Thanksgiving. It would be... Fourth of May would be right after Thanksgiving.
It'd be after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, the 27th.
Twenty-seven.
So, and I don't know where, we didn't have it on here, where would that one?
Dykeville.
Dykeville. So it'd be November 27th, 6 o'clock at Dykeville. All right. Unless there's anything else people need to discuss, they have a motion to adjourn.
Over.
All right. One second. All right. All in favor, you're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for coming. Huh?